Good evening. Welcome to the April 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Ms. Henry, would you please start with the roll call?
Alderman Emerson. Alderman Emerson.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Azier.
Here.
Alderman Mims. Alderman Scott. Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Walters.
Here.
Let's see, Alderman Van Buskirk. Hugh. Alderwoman Kriesig.
Here.
And Alderman Myers.
All right, we have a quorum. Look for a motion for the approval of the September 19th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. So move by Mr. Van Buskirk.
Second.
Second. Jim Azier. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Alderman Van Buskirk.
Yes.
Alderman Azier.
Yes.
Alderwoman Emerson.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Walters.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kriesig.
Yes.
Alderwoman Hayden.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have the Truman Heartland Community Update. Dan O'Neil, Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity Board Chair, Jason Sneddon, Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity Advocacy Committee. And I believe you guys have brought some other folks with you. So whoever's doing most of the talking, step right up, Mr. O'Neil. Good evening.
Good evening.
Right there below, there's a little... There you go.
Good evening. My name is Daniel O'Neil. I'm Chairman of the Board of Truman Habitat for Humanity. We believe that all people deserve a decent and affordable home. I want to express our appreciation to you for the partnership we have formed to repair homes for those who have qualified in your community. Having a decent and safe home promotes good citizenship. I want to thank you for having us here tonight. And now I would like to introduce Stephen Collins, our project manager, to give you more details about our work.
Good evening.
Hello, and thank you for having us. Please forgive me while I get us set up. As Dan said, my name is Stephen Collins. And in addition to being a project manager in the Home Preservation Program at Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity, I am a proud graduate from Raytown High School. So go Blue Jays, happy to be back here in the Raytown area. I understand that we've had a relationship with the city of Raytown for a number of years now. And so, of course, I think that everybody has something of an idea of the work that we do and where those funds go. I also understand that Ms. Egger will be speaking with some statistics later. My goal, what I would like to do, is to communicate to the to the City Council, to the people here assembled, what that work means, what it looks like, and why it's so important for people in the community to know that there is a safety net, to know that there are other people in the community who provide resources, provide their time, and do what they can to help to help them out when they are in need. So just a brief primer on Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity's mission is seeking to put God's love into action. We bring people together to build homes, community, and hope. The vision that we work toward is a world in which everybody has a decent place to live. We primarily work to that vision in two ways. One is by getting volunteers together and using donated materials and resources to build new homes with partner families, to place that family into that home. And the second way that we work towards that vision is what we'll be talking about tonight, which is home repair projects. So who is Truman Habitat? We've been serving Eastern Jackson County for over 30 years. In that time, we have grown. We have grown particularly over the last five years or so. We currently have over 30 employees working across several teams to support the mission. Those different teams are construction, family services, our restore, which is a big way that we generate funds to work towards that mission, community engagement, development, and administration. Really, the thing to know is that it's really important for us to have all of these teams working in tandem toward the mission because as things continue to get more expensive, as housing continues to become less and less affordable for the people in our communities, we are a team dedicated to innovating and dedicated to changing the model that Habitat works towards in order to keep people in their homes. And just as an example of what I mean, for years, new home construction was the primary business of what Habitat for Humanity worked towards. It's the primary way that we worked toward a world in which everybody had a decent place to live. Over time, and particularly since the pandemic, we have noticed and seen a growing need in the community. The need not just to put families into new homes that we build, but to keep families in the homes that sometimes they've owned for decades. As construction costs continue to get more expensive, that doesn't just hurt people trying to get into the home for the first time. As insurance costs go up, as the cost to repair a leaky pipe goes up, as taxes continue to go up, the dream of homeownership, even for folks who own their home and have lived in their home, for folks who have been in the community for years, for decades sometimes, the dream of them staying in their home can sometimes be in jeopardy. As a result, Truman Habitat has worked to increase the scope of our home repair program, which is why we are very grateful for municipal partners such as the folks of Raytown who provide the resources that are necessary for us to do that work. So today, just to give an example of what one project means and to give you all a sense of how we work, to give you all a sense of what it means to be a partner to Truman Heritage, how we solve problems, I'd like to highlight the following project at 9808 East 67th Terrace. So the way our home repair program works is folks apply and get put onto a waitlist. When it comes to be their turn, our project manager who handles Raytown projects, we meet with the folks in the community, we assess what the home's needs are, and then we assess what the homeowner's needs are. In this case, when we went to this home, we saw that the home needed a new full paint job. We saw that it needed new gutters around the house and that it needed quite a bit of brush clearing to happen as well. So when you drive by a house like this, the needs of that home can sometimes be very clear from the outside. We, when we go in and meet with the folks in the community, we have the unique chance to assess what the needs of that homeowner are. Part of what we do, part of our job, is connecting with each one of the homeowners that we meet with, and we get to see a little bit of that story, a little bit of what that homeowner needs. So for instance, in this particular location, the homeowner was trying to support two children that had medical needs on a fixed income without a lot of options. So things like what might be routine maintenance for some began over time to come out of her reach. So we figured, let's see what we can do to help this home and also to help this homeowner. Another thing about working with Truman Habitat is that we have a dedicated group of volunteers and we have access to resources made possible through volunteers, through people donating their time and resources. And so, for instance, when we see a project that maybe the budget of that particular project might be a little higher than what we can afford to pay for, we have ways of making that project happen. So for instance, in this house, we saw what the needs were, we started to collect estimates. We saw that some of those needs might be outside of what that particular project budget could pay for, so we looked for other solutions. So our first solution, and one that works for Habitat all around the world, is to bring people together. We are blessed because Habitat for Humanity has such a no... such a visible brand and such a well-known history for working in the nonprofit sector that people come to us and they give freely of their time. So the first thing that we did was we utilized some of our dedicated volunteers that comes out. These are people that come out every week, two, three times a week, all day to work on whatever project, new build or home repair project that we have. We got our volunteers out there to get the painting started and to clear the brush. This is where our community engagement team becomes really important because organizing and establishing a relationship with these volunteers is necessary for us to do this kind of work. And what we've... what we have observed is that as construction costs continue to rise, the place that volunteers play in us, reaching our mission, becomes more and more important. So what you can see here is, these are our regular volunteers who come out every week. We got them out, they cleared the brush, and they are starting to prime and paint the house. The second part of the solution for this particular project was to utilize our staff. So we organized a build day using every member of our team that was available to go out and to continue the project, which is something that I really appreciate. So I'm part of the construction team, my background is as a remodel contractor, but that's not true for everybody who works for Habitat. So I really enjoy the idea, I really enjoy the opportunity to get every member of our team out to work on projects. It also helps to communicate both to the homeowners and to our team how important it is to get out there and to see the needs of the community firsthand. Because this way, we can meet everybody on the team, can meet the homeowner, everybody has some skin in the game. And the last part of what we were looking at for this project was utilizing some corporate relationships that we have to organize another build day. So for instance, Advantage Metal Recycling is a corporate partner of ours. We organized a build day for them to come out and to finish that project. I'm also really grateful to work for volunteers because the type of people who come out and volunteer on these projects also happen to be the type of people who won't complain when, for instance, you ask them to climb scaffolding and to do work on what I'm pretty sure was the hottest day of last year. And not one time did anybody complain, not one time was anybody anything other than helpful and enthusiastic to be here. And that also that aspect of how Truman Habitat, how Habitat for Humanity solves problems, I think is really important because not only do the people that we have relationships with, these corporate volunteers, many of whom don't live in the Raytown area, many of whom wouldn't have any business coming to the Raytown area or Eastern Jackson County generally, they get to come out, they get to have a great time, they get to meet the homeowner, they get to participate in the mission, and they get to really build community within their teams and within the community that they are working in also. So utilizing volunteers, utilizing corporate partners, utilizing our staff, utilizing all of the things that Truman Habitat has to offer, we go from a home that was looking like this to a home on a busy street that looks like this. So I want to talk just a minute about what that means because a house that gets freshly painted is great. A homeowner who doesn't have to worry about paying for that is great too. But if you dig deeper, you realize the effects, the ripples that that can have in the homeowner's life and also in the community writ large. The fact that that homeowner no longer has to worry about trying to find out how they are going to pay for the gutters, for the paint job, for clearing the brush, means that they can invest elsewhere. This homeowner is taking care of two children who have needs. She can now focus on taking care of those children who are in Raytown schools, who are part of the community. Also, this happens to be on a busy street. When people in that neighborhood see a property that has been visibly improved, that changes the whole feeling of that side of the street. Also, getting volunteers out, getting our Habitat signs out, that means that neighbors are talking to each other, neighbors are talking to us. That means that all of a sudden, that homeowner who lives in that house, who might have conflicted feelings about speaking to her neighbors when her house is in a state that she doesn't have the resources to fix, now can go out and can be proud of the house that she lives in and can not worry about the state of her house when she engages with a member of the community. And also, and this is, I think, probably my favorite part, and also the part that is, I think, the most important for a member of the Habitat staff to communicate. So every day, I deal with homeowners in the Raytown area and the Independence area, all over Eastern Jackson County. As a project manager, I am sometimes the first person that they speak with, and often I am the last person that they speak with when that job gets completed. What that means from a practical standpoint is that I get to see that homeowner change over the course of that project being completed. And it's hard to quantify, I don't think that you can put this on a spreadsheet, but when a homeowner sees that other people in their community give their resources, give their time, put their elbow grease into helping them, that gives them hope in a way that I see all the time. If there's one thing that I want to communicate to the people here assembled, it's that people thank us all the time, people thank us every day. I'm grateful to share that experience with them, but that work is only possible through the resources and through the generosity of the people that make that work possible. So on behalf of the people who benefit from this program, I'd like to... I would like to thank the people here assembled. But also, we have an opportunity to hear from somebody who doesn't work for Truman Habitat. I have invited a homeowner who has received services through Raytown's Home Repair Grant here to just briefly introduce herself. I'd like to call up Ms. Rhonda Herring.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Could you introduce yourself to the...
I'm Rhonda Herring. I'm a Raytown resident. I was blessed with this home in 97. Even though I'm a homeowner, as maturity comes, my income doesn't. I was so in need of this driveway. Did I say too much?
No, not at all. And could you talk a little bit about the work that was actually performed at your home?
This beautiful driveway I have, I've fallen twice. And the doctor's like, okay, were you tripping on one, not paying attention sometimes? Just walking along, but I mean, I am so blessed and so grateful because I could not have done that myself. That was not in my budget, lights, gas, water, food. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you. You are so needed. Pride ego stops people from asking. No, I try to get my neighbors, and I'm very emotional because this is awesome. And being a homeowner, no one understands when you're not able to do it yourself and you've been given a blessing. I'm overwhelmed, but I'm grateful. Excuse me.
Well, the last question I had was, I was going to ask you if you could say something about what that work meant to you, but I think at least you've already communicated that.
Well, it's given me a sense of pride. It's given me a sense of residential... I'm a Coral lots, you know, that's that ego. You cannot be on the Coral lot looking all night, right, right? And you maybe look right, right? I'm going through health issues, but it feels good to say, if I'm doing, look like, oh, wow, look at this. Thank you. You know, it builds your self-esteem. It makes you feel that you're worthy of being a homeowner, even though your income may say not. But Raytown, Raytown said yes. Yes, they did. This is what happens. Excuse me, I'm always emotional.
Quite right.
But I feel good.
Mr. Mayor.
Proud. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rhonda Herring. Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Banae Mims, and I am so proud to hear you not only be full, but appreciate the work that Habitat for Humana has done for you because you were out looking and asking for help. And Mr. Mayor, I did send her over and nobody gave me a follow-up until I went by her house and I got to see it, so I'm just as happy as she is. She's blessed, and I want to thank you all from Habitat for Humana for helping her because she had a lot of pride and she did not want to ask for any help. So I really appreciate you all coming out helping her. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I met this lady, and I did ask for help. We were first coming in each other's hair. And then it went on, I closed mouth never fades what my father taught me. And I was like, she was like, what's going on with you? I was like, this again, I'll teary-eyed. And we just talked. You know. Thank you, Ms. Mims, I appreciate you.
You're more than welcome, Stevie.
Thank you for coming up and telling your story, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
How important it is.
I want you to know that I'm very appreciative and gratitude... I'm so greatly appreciative, you just don't know. It feels good to just be sweeping along and just, just do the do, I enjoy it. I probably get on neighbors nerves, but why not? Thank you.
Thank you.
And just before I open up to any questions that anybody might have, I want to talk just a little bit about what opportunities Truman Heritage has to do more in the city of Raytown. We are always looking for more opportunities to help folks in the community and to leverage other funds that we find to help people all over our service area. So for instance, we were just awarded a new home repair grant through the Mid-America Regional Council for Aging and Adult Services. The focus of this grant is to help homeowners age in place. So the focus is aging in place modifications, things like accessibility, things like widening doors to their bathroom, wheelchair ramps, basically anything that can help somebody stay in their home. We were just awarded this grant earlier this year, and we've already started to roll that grant out. And I'm happy to say that we've already helped at least two folks that I can think of in Raytown specifically. Other than that, we are always looking for opportunities for new home construction. So we're always looking for new lots, which we can acquire and then in the future build on. While we are very excited for new build construction, the thing to know is that a project like that requires quite a bit of financing. So while we are excited for the opportunities, and we're also excited for the opportunities to find financing partners, which are required for us in order to do those new home constructions. And the last way, and this speaks to a way that Truman Heritage is trying to innovate the Habitat model, as things get more expensive, of course, we don't just do new builds, we do home repair. We are also now acquiring existing homes that we can essentially do a remodel on and still put a qualifying family into that home that will be a good foundation for them to live their lives well into the future. Which is all to say that Truman Habitat is dedicated to helping the folks of Raytown, looking for new ways to do so and to bring resources, grants, and people in the community into Raytown to help, to help the people of Raytown.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it very, very much.
I remember when we first... our first project, I was former... Steve Myers. Not a family, they needed some help, new paint, and I was so, so... I pay a reminder that I'm about to discuss this.
Mr. Van Buskirk.
Thank you, sir. Well, first, I just want to say I'm really thankful that we can partner with you. And this is certainly good for our community, and we're glad we have an opportunity to do that. I've personally had an opportunity to do hands-on work on some Habitat for Humanity projects in the past and in Kansas City, and it was a very fulfilling experience. I want to thank you for the great work you do in our community. And certainly, we appreciate that and we hope that we can expand that as we, as we go forward and thankful that we have the funds to be able to participate in this. I did have an opportunity a few years ago, I know, to do a ribbon cutting for one of the Habitat homes here, and that was quite an experience. And I've seen the results of many of the homes that have been built and rehabbed over the years. And it's, it's great for our city, great for our community. Thank you again for the great work you do.
Mr. Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. One is, I've been on the board for a long time, so this program goes way back and I think it's probably the one thing that being on the board and being part of this program feels very fulfilling, even though there weren't, not always you have to do the work, but to see the projects that they both built and redone. My question is, when you, like the property that you showed, so do you take on properties where there's also, along with it, a tremendous code problem? Do you... I mean, how would you handle that? That's because I, I see houses like that, and I wonder, you know, the approach that you take to guarantee that after you take care of the code problem, where all the junk is, to guarantee that it doesn't come back again?
Right. So to answer the first question, specifically in Raytown, we have an exterior focus on the type of work that we do. So for instance, we use the grant funds to affect exterior repairs, which are exactly the kinds of code, the kinds of projects that directly address code violations, things like peeling paint, cracked driveway, all of those things which would leave the homeowner with a citation for a code violation. In terms of what we do to do what we can to guarantee that that remains a problem that is solved, our hands are somewhat tied in terms of, you know, what kind of maintenance or follow-up we can do. In fact, we feel like it's important from an equitability standpoint that once we serve a particular address through a particular program, that... that after that work is done to completion, uh, to the satisfaction of the homeowner and to our standards, um, that we don't go back and use those same grant funds for that homeowner, uh, for a period of at least five years. That way, we can spread the resources that have been made available to folks around the community. Having said that, because we have, at that point, a relationship with that homeowner, oftentimes, we're able to put them in touch with additional community resources, which they may be able to, uh, follow up and get help with. Um, so just being a housing, uh, nonprofit, we are part of a network of nonprofits in the Eastern Jackson County area. So there's nothing that we love more than to get people in touch with additional resources that can help them out.
Thank you. And the other thing is, um, a topic I brought up at least once before, not to you, but it's a problem I haven't ever found a resolution for that's kind of related to what you do. And that is the number, this is the third time that I've had to deal with it. My ward, we have an elderly person that's a single tenant that no longer has television. And not always because they can't pay for it, but they, they don't know how to work it. They don't have the internet, they don't know computers. And, and, and the remotes are so complicated and getting more complicated. And what I'm seeing is that in every case, the people get extremely depressed.
Right.
Changes their life, they have no friends. Television's a big deal to them. And, uh, there's no one to call to help. And, um, and to share that with, I expect you to solve the problem. But by making it known to other people, even maybe to the cities, we can identify. And it's very difficult because the first thing you do is you say, well, let's go to the TV. And they say, well, we don't care. You know, we go, we're, we're paperless, you don't have a computer, you're not going to watch TV. You're done. I think it's a pretty harsh thing. And I think it's a social problem, that I think that, that the government does everything else.
Right.
I don't, I don't know why we, we can't address the problem. I don't see anybody addressing it. Um, so, thank you for listening. I, I think it's a big deal.
And if I may, I, I can say that that is, we see that too. Um, the exact same types of situations that people find themselves in. The loneliness that can happen for folks who live on their own, uh, who don't have a support system. The inability to sort of keep up, um, and even know exactly what their needs are. It can be really difficult. There are often times when we, as project managers, as members of the staff, you know, many of the folks that we deal with, sometimes we might be the only people that they speak to that week, you know? In turn, that's just from a personal standpoint, it is something that we see. And, um, we try to do what we can to just be quality members of the community with them, um, on a personal basis. From an institutional basis, I can tell you that part of what we do, and this speaks to the different teams that I had a list up, uh, of before. So, for instance, um, a couple of years ago, our family services director continued, noticed that kind of need that we would see all the time, folks calling in with needs for aging in place, not only modifications to their homes, but also just the need to get in touch with different social services, different communities of people, often. You know, oftentimes, it's not even a particular problem with their building. Sometimes it's just needing to be connected with the right people. And then, as a result of seeing that need, we brought on a member of the staff who is an aging in place specialist. And one of the things that she does, in addition to going out and getting grants like the Mid-America Regional Council Grant, is to just have resources available so that when folks do call in, they can get them in touch with the right groups of people around the community. And even beyond that, at our, uh, office at the Young School, which is at Truman Road and Truman and Nolan, in the old Young School building, we've started to host classes. And the classes that we host sometimes are about plumbing repair. Plumbing, plumbing repair and plumbing safety is the one that we're hosting actually tonight, right now, as we speak. But some of the other classes are how to use home electronics. You know, how to deal with spam callers, how to deal with all sorts of things that folks who do have those problems in the community have. And more than just solving those problems, it's utilizing the space that we have as a center for community. That's one way that we are trying to address at least part of that problem that you've identified.
Where do we advertise your classes? I mean, if someone said to me, what classes do you have, where, where would I send them?
So, the easiest and most up-to-date information can be found on our website, which is trumanhabitat.org, uh, dot O R G. Also on our social media pages, that's where you can find our most up-to-date information. Um, particularly with the classes, because our family services director, once again, has organized these classes so that they happen virtually every week on different topics. Um, we call it the Master of Homeownership Program. But it's not just about folks who want to learn how to be great homeowners. We'll host cooking classes, we'll host classes on personal finance, we'll host classes on credit. So our idea is to bring people together in as many different, for as many different types of classes. But just having a place where people can come together is, I think, for me and from what we see, really important.
Thank you. I, of all my years on this board, I've never heard that explanation, so, thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Kriesik and then Mr. Walters, I'm going to give you all, uh, between the two of you, if you could, uh, keep it under the five minutes because we do still have two presentations, one of which has to do with this from our staff. And we got a meeting at seven o'clock. So, if you would, and then, Mr. Walters, it'll be your turn. Ms. Kriesik.
I just have some questions. When you say your area is Eastern Jacks, what are the boundaries like of your area, your work area?
So, um, we are Jackson County, east of 435.
Okay.
So, communities of independence, Raytown, Lee Summit, Blue Springs, uh, parts of Grandview, and parts of Kansas City.
Okay. And then, um, off the top of your head, how many Raytown projects do you have backlogged?
So, we have started to keep our waitlist actually here with the city. So, Ms. Egger, who is about to speak, I think, uh, is the one who keeps our waitlist. So, I, I, to be honest, I, I don't know what that number is.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, how do you prioritize then? Is, as soon as you get the materials together for a project, I'm sure you're juggling a lot of, um, trying to make something happen, you know?
Sure. So, we try to, uh, in order to remain equitable, we try to essentially keep to a first come, first served basis.
Yeah, okay.
Um, if you apply, then you will get services prior to a person applying after you. With the exception of, there are certain categories of folks that we, uh, deem to be priorities. So, for instance, um, two categories of seniors and veterans. Um, we have an institute, we have decided that serving those communities is an institutional priority. So, if we accept an application across any of our programs, we allow those folks to skip the line.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for all that you do.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is, you know, when it rains, it pours. Just as the meeting started, somebody emailed me something that just happened in their neighborhood. Is there any way we could help? So I'm just going to give you my card. If you could give me your phone number, I can talk to you tomorrow about it. It's all the time I need now. And here's what we're talking about. Okay, what's your phone number, sir? Okay.
My phone number is eight one six three three seven zero six three two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Neill, would you do me a favor? Would you step forward since you're the, uh, the, uh, board chair and have your people stand up and introduce them for us?
Sure. Be glad to do that. The first lady I'd like to introduce is Lindsey Brown. Lindsey is our community development, uh, director. And, uh, she's, uh, stays very busy putting together things like we're doing tonight. So, thank you.
And one quick note for the aging in place workshops, they could also just call our main number because I know not everybody has computers. And the person who picks up is usually right for you.
And Holly is also with us tonight, and she's, uh, she's actually been working with us, what, a year and a half now?
Almost two years.
Almost a year. And she has, it's, she has been such a pleasure to work with. Uh, and she kind of bounces around between lots of responsibilities, so we really appreciate her.
And I'm Haley, and I also want to add on to, we have an email marketing list too that goes out with all our boxes. If anyone has an email to you, they don't have this.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Jason, who's, uh, on our committee, our advocacy committee. He helped set up tonight, and he did a really good job.
Thank you, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time. So, before you leave, um, a couple of things. I'm, I'm on the Bark Board, so I'm glad to see that, that, that grant got out there. Uh, very important, number two. This program does so much for the fact that we have been, for a long time, a, a city for all, a community for all ages, that we've been working on that for quite some time. Somebody who's been around for a while realizes how many years we've put money into this program that we have that assists them in getting theirs done. And they came along, and then we really started getting things done. Like you, Mr. Van Busker, I was at a lot of those places working on them and also the ribbon cuttings and stuff over the years, with some of the newer places and some of the rebuilt places. But it helps our whole community, it not only helps the people that it serves, but it also helps our community and makes the neighborhoods look better. And hopefully, it'll kind of spur some of the other people that can't afford it to fix up their own, be, be on their own houses too. So, I just wanted to say that, uh, the money that we have put in that budget, obviously, uh, is something that's been very, very good. And I want to thank all of you and everybody that's on that volunteer force for doing what you do in our community. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we next have Diane Egger, Community Development Director. She has two things to do. One is the Habitat for Humanity update and animal control update. Take it away.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Michael, if you could help me with this presentation, that would be maybe. He was already waiting at the wings, you know what I was going to say. So I have two presentations to, um, present to you this evening, and I'm probably going to, uh, speak pretty quickly. Um, but I'll just piggyback on the Truman Heritage Habitat folks, if I can, for fluidity. We will get that started. Um, but for the city of Raytown, we have forty people that we have had call for help with the program. Um, for everything that they have discussed, painting, driveways, dead trees, we have forty people that have called for help. What started in 2020 with a $20,000, um, budget for a goal of five homes has turned into, and grown, into a $50,000 budget with a goal of ten homes. Um, we have four completed already. We have four working, so we have four completely, um, done. We have four in the works, which we'll leave two for the remaining of the year, for the budget year. So, I want you to be confident that we are stretching the funds that you have given us to the max of its capabilities, of the funds. We have the Truman Heritage folks, that they get volunteers to help with, which saves money. And they also get free or reduced supplies, which helps a lot. So, we have those helping to, uh, extend the money. So, how does the program work? Here, we had some questions, but a citizen will call, and it starts the budget year. So, we start over again, November first. If somebody will call, they will give me their name, phone number, address, and what they need done. Then, when the time is right, when the Habitat's ready to do work, it's all exterior, so it's usually in the spring, they will, Habitat will reach out to me. I will send them the first group of five. They will vet them for age, just like he was saying, age, um, ability, and also what needs to be done. After that, I will pass on, the information is important in the order that it is received. So, I don't pick and choose, I give them Habitat the information in the order that I receive it. Then, we go to the Truman Heritage, contacts, uh, the citizen, again, determines eligibility. They set up the contractors, all of the materials, and then they make sure that the work gets done. After the work is done, then they send me the invoice, which I pay. So, where we're at this year, we are, again, four done, four in the works, which will only leave two for the budget year. Here are some nice photos of stuff that we've already completed. Here's a dead tree removal. This lady, this tree was leaning over her home, and she was afraid that would have damaged and fall on her home, and so we had that tree removed for her. Here is a door. Now, the left door won't even close, so it's a hazard, a danger to this lady, this person. And so, they changed the framing on the outside of the door so that it could shut. So, that was a great project. And then, this is an exterior painting for a house. And this, obviously, uh, has some paint, some peeling paint. It also had on the back a dangerous stair. And the very top one looks like a doozy, because it was a doozy. Somebody had fallen on these stairs, and so Habitat was able to, um, rebuild the stairs, um, for these people. And those are just some examples of what we have done so far. Um, we obviously really enjoy working with Habitat, it's a great partnership. We email back and forth all the time, discussing certain projects. Um, they do great work. And the citizens are proud of this program. I think it's important for you all to know that I get calls. I have about a handful of people that call me every week. Where am I at in the list? Are they going to get to me? That kind of thing. And so, we get a lot of phone calls of people waiting for help, and they're excited about the help, and they really appreciate the help. So, it is a very popular program and one that, uh, you all can be very proud of. So, I'm going to just skip to the second part of the presentation, so then we might have time for questions, okay? December fifth of last year, I received an email that the shelter, the animal shelter had, was terminating their contact, contract with the city. So, obviously, I had to scramble and try to get an alternative solution. As you can imagine, it wasn't easy. And I want to thank my staff. Before I get ahead of myself and start the presentation, I want to thank my staff, a staff of three, who worked with me to persevere through this ordeal. There were many times in my career, very few, few times, that I can label so important, so obviously important, that I knew that the decisions I made in that instance would affect a city forever. This is one of those times. Again, we persevered with my staff through their Herculean efforts and compassion to take care of the animals in Raytown. Without that, I don't know where the animals would be, but I can guarantee you, they wouldn't have near the fantastic care that they are getting now. So, January one, the city assumed responsibility for the boarding, adopting, fostering the stray animals in the city of Raytown. Again, this is a staff of three that continues also to do code cases. On January one, we started a partnership with both Laurel Pet Resort and the Pet Connection. Before partnering with them, how it would work is we would pick up an injured stray hurt animal, and we would take it to the shelter, where the shelter would board, feed, vaccinate, and make sure that its needs were met. How the process now works is that we have to partner with these two, uh, organizations so that we can meet the needs of the animals. Laurel Pet Resort takes in the animals, assesses them, boards them, vaccinates them, and make sure that they are safe and healthy for their stray hold. And a stray hold is a five-day mandatory hold, um, by the Department of Agriculture that is mandated. And so, during that stray hold, Laurel Pet Resort takes in the animals for that time. And kind of an interesting, sweet side note is that this particular facility, at night, sprays lavender in the air for these animals, for these porcelains. They also turn on music, and they have a baby light, just to make their surroundings, um, as best and soft and nice as that they can. Because, you know, no one knows what they've been through, but it's usually not a good circumstance if we have them. The Pet Connection specializes in the harder-to-place dogs. So, after the dogs come off of stray hold, the Pet Connection, if there's a dog that we're going to have trouble adopting and fostering, that's when the Pet Connection steps up, and they will help us train. and fostering, that's when the Pet Connection steps up, and they will help us train these animals so that we can adopt them out and foster them. What an invaluable resource and organizations these two have been. I can't thank them enough if they're listening, but they've just been fantastic, and I'm so proud to partner with them. So, here are some animals that we took in January, in January. The first is Sammy, my personal favorite. January 1, we took in our first dog, D1, then we took in a cat, C1, and we took in a rabbit. So, that is Sammy, Stan, and Midnight, who have all been adopted, so, good news there. But a little stats for you, of the 160 animals that were picked up, staff has reunited 109, and these are just stats from March 31st, so that's not including the last two weeks, so they'll, the numbers will have increased. But of the 160 animals picked up, staff has reunited 109 with their owners. We've adopted out 18 as of March 31st, nine are at Laurel, two are at Pet Connection. Here, sad case, this was a dog shivering, it was sleeting, and I don't mean to show sad, but this is what we deal with, this is sad. This poor little dog was out on a balcony, no way to get shelter, shivering. This is when we got the bucket truck, we were able to get a bucket truck with the help of Public Works, we got a bucket truck and took the animal in safety. And here is the animal now. This is when she was adopted by her owner, and a touching little story is she saw the story of how this animal has been left and freezing, and when she picked her up, she gave her that Carhartt vest and said, "You will never be cold again." It's very touching, so. But she's happy. Now, here is Josie, I think they renamed this little dog, Josie. Here are, on the side, it was her and her sister nearly starved to death. Somebody dropped them off here at City Hall and said they had found them on the road. Turned out, it was their dogs that they had just allowed to starve, so we're in the process of, we have written them tickets. So, that's in the court process. But the little dog on the left is the one sitting, it's all hands on deck at Animal Home and Community Development, so that's actually me. The Saturday night after we picked this little dog up, Josie, they didn't think that she would make it through the night, and so I had to take her to the emergency vet. But we can't end on a sad story, so here's Josie, three months later, happy, living her best life, and look at her body score, how nice she looks for, so, it's an amazing, amazing story. And those are every day for us, you know? We have good stories, great stories, and it's just, I'm so fortunate to have great staff and great partners to work with. So, we're working hard to keep the animals of Raytown safe, and with that, I will take any questions.
Mayor, before, before you move on. I want to speak to service, our staff. Those two things you just seen, between the Habitat for Humanity, along with the animal, that's about service to the community of Raytown. And I want people to understand that. So, when you talk bad about somebody, you deray them on social media, understand, these people have their lives, and daily, when she sold that dog, that wasn't just there at the office. These don't stop at 5:00 PM. They go out at night and pick them up. These Habitat for Humanity, they go and talk to people at their own homes at critical times. So, I want us to understand that when we look at that, we should be thankful to have staff like this who come and go beyond, above and beyond to provide the service to the citizens of Raytown. And animals are part of our community. And a lot of times, when those heartfelt things, those things you just don't forget when you see two animals about to starve to death, and then you come and provide that service. So, thank you, Diane, for the work you do and being a champion as what you are. When I say she's a leader, she's a leader, a worker, and a servant to this community. So, we want to thank you for what you continue to do and what you have done, and thank your staff for what you continue to do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
You stole my thunder, that's exactly what I was going to say. Okay, we're almost up on the seven o'clock hour. Very short, and then, Ms. Ray, very short. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that quick enough? No, I do have a couple things to say. Thank you, Diane, for your hard work. For your hard work during this difficult situation, we're very fortunate to have you and for your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Bondi?
Little Bill.
You're leading through on something, can you? Thank you. Ms. Ray?
I just want to ask a question, so this is part of our city budget?
Pardon me?
Or has it financed, or?
Yes, yes, it is. Yes, it's out of the same budget that the previous contractor was being paid out of.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I'll ask more questions later, we just adapt from heart to heart. Are you familiar with that organization?
Heart to heart, no.
Yeah. Well, they advertise their animals nationally, so, thank you.
So, before we close on yours, before we close on yours, I want to tell you, you already covered a lot of it, but I'm here every day.
Yes, you are.
I see the animals that they get brought in, I see the animals that they work with, even when they're always trying to get me to rescue some more.
We're the cute little puppy today, cute little puppy today.
They're, yeah, they never stop. Anyway, if y'all would actually see how the staff handles those animals, they come in here, unbelievable, the things that I've seen too, and what they're able in a short period of time to do with these animals, and the amount of people that they get them back to that accidentally lost them, and then all the dog fighting and all the other things over the years that they have done to rescue animals from horrible situations. And being a dog person, being an animal person, but especially a dog person, it breaks my heart to see what's out there. So, I think the new partnership that you have developed with those other two places has been fantastic, but most of all, I want to thank you and your staff for the most wonderful job that you're doing with this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else seeing nobody? I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Ms. Emerson has a motion, second?
Second.
I'm not sure which one that was.
Me and Garza.
Ms. Garza, you have a second. Do this by affirmation, all in favor, say aye.
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 We will be adjourned at 7:02, be back in here at 7:10 to get started, we'll take a little short break.